I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey everybody, welcome to the February 7th Town and Wakefield Planning Board meeting. Alternates, we don't look like we need any, we don't have any. Public comment, is there any public comment out there for anything that's not on the agenda tonight? You don't have anything Ralph? It's not like you. We have no formal public hearings and we have some conceptual reviews. We have Robert Hallahan, 161 River Road, tax map, lot 4, minor subdivision. Go ahead Ralph.
Hopefully I've done my homework. Okay, last time I was here, there was a question on the subdivision that already existed, right? And basically, I don't think that there is, but you wanted me to research three different properties that were out behind me. So I don't know if you guys got a mapping on.
Yes, in your packets, I actually included the minutes from the last meeting. And then the next one, latest course on this. And then in the back, the back of the packet, there's a couple of maps.
You wanted me to look at lots 32, 33, and 34. Because in the old map, which I believe is this one here, it shows these properties that were not existing at one time. And then they showed up on the map at some other time. I'm learning here, so work with me please. So you wanted me to do the research on these properties thinking that there was a further subdivision that could have existed out there. And basically I had the research, I had a woman by the name of Nancy D. Do the title search in these properties. And she wrote a report for me. So I don't know who wants to read that or take a look at that, but I can pass that around.
Is that this report, that conceptual review?
The line paper for the next page.
Alright, so for the public or for you guys to follow along with us a little bit. We had a subdivision plan that said on the plan that there can be no further lots subdivided.
Correct.
So you've gone back and done some homework. And we know there's been other lots subdivided because our tax map shows from this plan that there are other lots that have been subdivided since that plan that said no more further subdivision. So that's where we're at. If we want to take a quick look at this report, looks like
This is from 97.
If we start on that first page, 134. So this is saying that
Okay, these here, these are the research, the titles on the properties, who they came from. It all boils down to, this is the report right here. Why don't you take a peek at that and see if you guys got that somewhere? I'm just in different order than you guys, that's all. Alright, that's the report. This woman has credibility with the town because they hire her to do the work.
Okay, so this is a report from Nancy D., Mountain View Title Abstract. 161 River Road, East Wakefield. Robert Hallahan, by virtue of the warranty deed from Ernest R. Blue Jr., trustee of the Pickpocket Invocable Trustee, 12399, book and page and conformatory deed of Ernest Blue Jr. dated blah blah blah. This is not a typical title search. I was asked specifically to address the condition of no further subdivision on the plan of Ernest R. Blue Jr. and Christopher and Bancroft approved in 53091 in Plan 135, Map 63 in the Carroll Foundation RC. That's the plan we were referring that had that in there. I was also asked to address lots 32, 33, and 34 on Tax Map 131. And those are the lots that we said, hey, there must have been a subdivision after that plan.
Right on.
I took the chains of titles to lot 32, 33, oh, I just read that again.
No.
Okay, 32, 33, and 34, back to the common ownership of James G. Mooney who acquired 100-plus acres in 1940 from James S. Mooney. Lot 33 was first conveyed by Mooney in 1967. Lot 34 was first conveyed by Mooney in 1963. Wakefield voted for subdivision regulations in December 1972. Lot 32 was first conveyed by Mooney by a deed dated in 4/11/72. But not recorded until 7/2/73. There is a waiver from the planning board waiving jurisdiction of this lot, blah blah blah. So there were no restrictions on these lots and no subdivision plan. So there was no real subdivision plan for those lots. It looks like those lots were created way back and they never showed up on this plan. So where, or when Ernie Blue acquired the property from Mooney in 1978, that deed, 7/20/03, the 100-plus acres, with the exception of 30 deeds for small lots within the 100 acres that had been conveyed. Lots 33, 34, and 35 were among the exceptions. These lots do not appear on the 1991 Plan 135-63, nor do they appear on the 1995 Tax Map which shows the current lot 4 as Map 39, Lot 56. Which lot 4 is that beach area, is that correct?
Yeah, the common way.
Common land. I could find no prior conditions or any other reason for the no further subdivision. Conditions on the Plan 135-63. I ran the chain of title for lot 35 also. That deed refers to lot 3 and 4 of Scrubner River Shores which is not recorded on registry, but does suggest the existence of a subdivision plan. No surveyor was named.
Interesting, right?
So that tells us where those other three lots came from. It looks like they were, they were already there somewhat, but there was 30 something deeds that comprised of this 100 acres. So it must have been a nightmare for this surveyor. Who surveyed this?
Brian Belling.
This particular plan, 91?
Oh, I don't, I believe he surveyed this property, yeah.
I don't know if Brian did the whole property. This is a separate piece, obviously, from the 100 acres because this is not 100 acres. How many total acres kind of here? How many total acres you own?
I don't know, nine plus, I think.
8.15. Well, it's probably nine plus if you fill the road in right.
I think so, yeah, I don't know.
Or is the road tied to that?
It all shows up on the map. So I, I don't know.
At this point, I don't know which map to trust.
Doesn't make it any clearer for us. So if we look at the current tax map. So just to be clear, what Mr. Hallahan wants to do, he wants to take, this is where your home is, right?
Right.
And he wants to make this a separate lot than this. When right now, he has, he owns everything. He owns the road, infrastructure for Falcon Way. And he owns this lot 4, the beach common area, which everybody basically has rights to in here, right? These people use that area?
Yes.
These people over here probably too?
Yes.
So it's already definitely a common area. Now, is that common area, is it supposed to be, you know, that large? Or was this automatically a subdivision because of the roadway here? You know, was this already one lot here and one lot here? I mean, we didn't even have these lots on our tax maps. So pretty easily, this one could be off the tax map too. Because I would think if you put a road in, Falcon Way is in, you would think that that would be a separate lot possibly than this lot. But I don't know, what's the, what do you guys think?
So I just have a, a bit off the wall question. If that note were not on the plan
Yep.
And he came in with this plan here.
Yep.
Is there any reason why under the regulations, he wouldn't be allowed to do that?
No.
Okay.
There might be some conditions that could be expensive, but it would be allowed.
Yeah, there's no, like, he wouldn't need a variance or frontage or anything like that.
Yeah.
And the roadway, the roadways appear to be private roads that are owned
By him.
By him.
Basically, everything's going to stay the same except that lot. I own the roads, I own the private way and all that. Just want to separate that one piece.
I don't know if you were here last time, he was in, could not. But I mentioned a homeowners association or that type of thing, he should do. You know, if, if we did do a subdivision, that should be a criteria. I know it's tough to do, but I've just done it on a piece of land in Wolfboro. So it's not as hard as you think. To get somebody to stop paying some dues towards the road and have it a formal association so it's easier for people to sell and buy houses in there. And it gives more people the responsibility for the road.
Yeah, we kind of, we kind of already pictured it.
Yeah, I know you do that, but formally, you should do it formally.
How wide is the road through here?
It varies, all the way through.
Like in this section where they're going to be, where we're going to be putting a new line in?
Wait a second, where on the line? Alright.
So when you come in?
This is the main road coming in, yeah.
It gets narrow, but then it winds up, right?
Maybe 15 feet or something like that, 18 feet. Never measured it.
What's the rule for a road?
Two cars wide.
Well, it all depends, I mean, old roads that are already existing, it's how wide the right of way is. I mean, there's no question that our zoning says or our site plan regs say that they gotta bring the road up to town standards in order to do a subdivision.
I believe we had talked before about giving us a waiver on that?
You could, you could get, you could ask for a waiver on that, yeah.
Yep. Because that's how that whole quest set off. You could do, you know, you basically said, you're in the area, but you gotta do some research or something like that. I'm just going from what I'm hearing. I'm all new at this, I've never done this before.
I'm just wondering if it might make sense to make this section here. Instead of putting the pins at the very end here and move them back, so you got some extra room there. Not that it's much, I'm just
You're on that lot line?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just moved the lot line back, so that at least that section's gonna have room for, you know, if you need to leave a foot somewhere.
This other plan might show that width of that there. At least this might be somewhat the scale. Is there a dimension anywhere on here?
No, I think we got that cut off.
So this one here, see this line here, is 100 feet?
Okay, so yes.
So this is 100, so it's definitely not a 50-foot right of way. Okay, it's not quite half that. Looks like about 33 feet probably.
So I have a question. If this was to move forward to come in front of the board officially as a, you know, minor subdivision. Would all of the property owners that have rights to this beach area, lot 4, be notified as part of that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so from
They're actually on board, my neighbors. They want to come here and help me.
So my, so my perspective, just my perspective only is, if somebody threw a red flag up and said, no, my rights are to this entire piece here and this is why, because in my deed it says this, I would have a problem with myself approving a subdivision. If that's not the case, then if the neighbors were for that and supported it, I don't think I'd have a problem. I would, I think you had mentioned at some point that if there was going to be a house built, it would be up like in this area here maybe?
Yeah.
And not on the common area?
No.
So like, to me, I'd be concerned about that. I wouldn't want people's rights to be taken away from that perspective. So there's just, again, this is conceptual, right? This is just a discussion we're having with you and nothing's binding. But from my perspective, if any abutters were opposed to this, I would put a lot of weight on that.
Well, if you're going to be, if he's going to be subdividing this, wouldn't you'd almost have to make access ways to cut off that common way and make that part of the roadway panel, wouldn't you?
There's actually, yeah, there's a road that goes up in there.
Like, so the pins would have to be almost set on the edge of the road, not right up to the neighbor's property. Just so that, and that makes it easier, especially if you go to an association because now you don't have roads on private property.
Well, you talked about these three lots back here? Well, I'm sure Brian would write, create a right of way there.
Right, and then that could cut off that
But it didn't necessarily mean it needs to be a right of way, but at least an easement for those people.
Right.
Because two of them already have an easement on it anyway.
What it could do is it could cut off the common area so that that house wouldn't be built on that.
Yeah, definitely, it would be, it would basically put this, I, if it was me, what I would do is I'd put it into four or three deeds, which would be your deed with a line here. Okay, and does this road come into yours this way here somewhere?
Yeah, it turns right into my driveway.
So a line there, a line here. So that way, then this road and this open space piece could be one deed. And that would be the association deed. Which you can be, your attorney would show you how to set up that association. Be very simple to set it up. And you would own it until you set up the HOA. But that, you know, you'd want to do, I'm telling you. And I think I would push for that when all your neighbors come here, or I would mention that. And then this would be a separate lot, and this would be part of this road. So you could still get right in this road, right into this, to have the access to the common area.
So do all the back lots have access to that, through that lot 4?
Yeah.
To the water?
Yes.
Is it a deeded access?
I believe they all have it in their deed. I mean, they have the right of way to, to use the roads. So I mean, that beach was already there when I came here. They've been using it, they got docked. Everybody uses it, I guess.
So what you're saying, Tom, is that would be a condition of the approval where we'd be waiving the need to upgrade the road and all of that as part of a package. The roads would become commonly owned by a homeowners association?
Right.
As opposed to
And the beach right of way.
Yeah, as opposed to people just having a deeded right to
So you wouldn't own this property anymore. Your association would own it. Which you can run that association, you can own it. Okay, but it has to be an association, have to collect some money legally. And that just help, gonna help everybody in the area to be able to sell a house.
I'm all for it.
But if I look at this plan again, I mean, this, this plan showed all the setbacks. It showed the line across here. It was meant to be a separate lot, I think, than this. As we could see here, that by this thing that she had written that were even missed on the plan with some other lots that were missed on the plan and weren't recorded yet. It was kind of before zoning. I know this plan was after zoning, so I don't know why they weren't on there at that time, but
I think the trouble was we were having issues with, there was more lots.
Yeah, there's an extra lot in there.
There was an extra lot in here as well.
Right, well, obviously lot 4 doesn't show up in the right spot on here.
I mean realistically, I think this whole map should probably just be discarded.
Well, it's, it's recorded in the registry, so we had to discard it.
These are the three lots that are about that.
Right, so what we're saying is that you've got your lot in the corner, on the very top, right? And you got lot 3. Then you got 36, 35, 39, which is 4. So we only get up to 34, so there's, it still doesn't add up, if you look at it. Those are all over here, but I'm just saying, on that, on that water's edge, when we line them up, they just, nothing matched.
So what does that mean for me?
That's, that's the confusing part of this, is that the maps don't match up.
Right, I think Brian's gonna be able to shed some light on it. He's got a survey, he's got to survey those lines, he's got to come in with a plan that shows these new lot lines, or whoever you hire, whatever surveyor you hire. But with that being said, I think like, no further subdivision would come from something like this. Like I subdivided some lots on a dirt road, not up to town specs. In lieu of that, I gave 155 acres of open space to be able to subdivide five lots off. I would say, you know, if we let him have this, which are definitely two, three separate lots here. If we let him have that separate lot, by waiving that, he ought to definitely give us the and we can explain it in the deed and on the plan that no further subdivision because of the waiver of no, not bringing the road up to upgrade. And that may have been the reason back in 1991, but it wasn't spelt out that way.
So we'd have that right on the plan.
Right, we'd have that note right on the plan, and it would be, have to put, be put in his deed for that large lot. And I think this is great tax dollars for our town, that lot.
I think I'm hearing good stuff, kind of confused.
Well, we'll see when your buddies get here and if you get, if you hire your surveyor and he doesn't see a problem with it, he can make it happen for you. I mean, I think you're a long way away. This is just a conceptual thing.
I understand that.
And nothing here is binding, that we say.
Selling everybody here to buy into a homeowners association, but then I would make sure that when you approach them on that, you let them know that they're going to be getting that is going to become
That's part of them, yeah.
Common property. It's no longer going to be just one sole individual owning it.
Right.
So Tommy, are you saying that that would be a condition of the subdivision and the subdivision couldn't, wouldn't be in effect until that homeowners association takes over the roads and that beach? I mean, you got a bunch of property owners, you gotta get everybody in and
I wonder what the people who don't live there that have just got lots. And I haven't seen them in, you know, seven or 15 years.
They should, they should, they should
Okay, just notify them.
I think you just gotta notify them, and if they don't show up, then
I mean, they would benefit from this too though.
Absolutely, and that's, and that's what I, that's what I sold to this other land that I just did it on, I set it up an HOA fee. These people haven't been paying any dues forever, okay? But now it's time, they gotta pay dues. Because now I own it, and they, I'm not gonna plow their road forever, I'm not gonna take care of it forever. And there's all kinds of legal documents that say they have to pay. But they don't really care about that. What they cared about is that they could sell their house easy because they belong to a homeowners association. Right now, the bank says, well, who plows your road? Who, who maintains and plows your road? And they say, oh, I don't know, a guy down the street. You know, that's you, that's you in this case. You know, so it's, you gotta, it only benefit everybody in the area and it helps the town to make sure that those roads do get plowed, so there's access in there. You know, and it gives the right for somebody in there to complain that you're not plowing the road quick enough. And that goes to a benefit to get a fire truck in there. It goes to all kinds of maybe benefits.
All over that, any safety vehicles, absolutely.
Right, but that gives people insurance, insurance that it's gonna be done if there's an HOA fee. It gives your bank the security that, okay, a fire truck's gonna get to the house, so we'll, we'll give you a mortgage on it. It's not gonna burn down every week. Or the road's gonna continue to be passable.
It's all about protecting assets, so, you know, the association opens up avenues to protect the assets.
So I think you could sell it, you could sell that. I was able to sell it to everybody in the association. I had 18 people I had to sell it to.
No, it's good because we've just basically come to an agreement with the roads getting plowed by Blackwood. Alright, so my next phase that I need to do is try to get a homeowners association going.
Well, I, I would talk to your attorney, but I would talk to a surveyor first to make sure he follows what we're talking about and what you're talking about doing. To make sure that's good, so you have, even if it's a sketch, he draws you a sketch so you can go see your homeowners that are in there and tell them what you're gonna do, but your attorney can draft up something really easy that's gonna get recorded. And that would be the type of thing that I would like to see. Here's a document, like when I subdivided off the one up on Bella Lake, I mean, Kathy Manisi made sure that I had the homeowners association agreement all signed. And I had to have the open space deed all signed and the restrictions and covenants on that association land. And before I could record my plan, that stuff had to be recorded too. So it's, and it really wasn't hard, it was a pain in the ass to make it, it worked, oh, I gotta do this for? You know, but it's really made it life simple for everybody. You know, and that should happen all at the same time. And not that we have that, you know, condition or, or something in our
Regardless of the
We don't have it in our zoning that you have to do that per se. But I think you're gonna have some people in here that are gonna want to know what you're gonna do for me, if we let you do this.
And you're asking for some waivers, right?
Yeah, and you're asking for a waiver.
So it looks like a win-win. I just gotta get the neighbors together, see if they want to do this. And if they draw something up, and then we'll come back to you guys and then show you that. And then from there, if I've met your terms
You don't, you don't have to show us that. If you, you gotta do that, you gotta try that, that's fine. You can bring that with you to a minor subdivision application.
It would be beneficial whether this goes through or not, just to have the association, especially where you have roads and everybody so that it's not all on you to take care of the roadway.
I agree.
So
Well, right now, I'm just trying to figure out what I need to do to make you guys happy.
You need to hire a surveyor.
Alright, well, I had it in here last time.
Yeah.
But basically, what I was just trying to find out is is it, I don't want to go spend $10,000 on a survey and I come back to you guys and say to me, look guys, I'm sorry Bob, this isn't gonna work out, and, you know, my brother's
Circumstances change every day, this is a non-binding session.
I understand that.
You gotta take a risk, you gotta take a risk.
I just want to know what I need to do to please you guys so I can move forward. I've never done this before, so I'm just
Those are the things we talk about. I don't know if anybody else has anything else, but I think the biggest thing for you is is talk to Brian and talk to your attorney about what we talked about. You know, the things that we're looking for. Your attorney might say, they can look for that all, all they want. It's not in their regulations.
Right, well, I want to show good faith with the town. The towns are working with me. I get all that. I don't have a problem with that.
You may want to bring the surveyor back in and have another one of these sessions.
I know, I think it's pretty easy to explain to Brian what it is, I really do.
Alright, as long as you're coming up with that.
Alright, so we're looking basically to get a drop on all three pieces.
To sum it up, make the roadway part of lot 4, get this lot separate, and your lot separate.
And then I can move on, right?
I don't know, maybe something you want to say for your kids, ten more years down the road. Tell your brother to keep living with you for a little while.
Yeah, yeah. Well, actually, it's family. I mean, this all started because of family, so they were asking, I thought I could help, it was a win-win for the family. Alright, so we're going for, to go right up on these three pieces by Brian. And you're gonna survey the property, that's what you need done too, as far as
It is survey.
Not right of way.
Yeah, so don't go off and get this property surveyed. And I think we would need, at this point, right? For a, tell me if I'm wrong here, but For a, tell me if I'm wrong here, but as part of a hearing on this, we would need to see a plan of what the ser, the end result would be. We would, it would be approved based on it being surveyed after, if it was approved, does that make sense? Like, don't go out and have this surveyed right now.
Yeah, I, no, I just, I just, I don't think he needs to do, he needs to come in with a plan, we gotta have a, a real plan that shows the lines.
Right.
But he doesn't have to set pins or any of those things, you don't have to spend any money on the ground.
Right, correct.
But he's gotta have a survey, he's gotta have a butters on it.
He's gotta have a plan that we can look at that says, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna separate this into three lots. But don't, I don't think what we're saying right now is go out and have somebody on the ground and start setting pins, don't do that, yeah.
So just a plan?
Yes.
And Brian will know that, not to do that to anybody.
Basically, it's already been surveyed.
Yeah, it has been surveyed.
Which one's right?
Yeah.
Presumably, it'd be either.
Brian may have to verify a few things.
He may have to verify a few lines, so.
Alright.
It's definitely best surveyed.
And I just, I, just, just to reiterate, as part of the application process, every one of those butters is gonna get a certified letter, so, i-if you can, speak to every single one of those and make sure that they're aware of what you're trying to do, and try to get some feedback from them, right?
Which I have.
That's helpful information.
We all get along great, they love me, so.
Only even the ones that are vacant lots, you're gonna wanna get a hold of too.
Alright, so I'll look on that.
'Cause somebody could come out of the woodwork and say, what, this isn't what I understood.
They can probably pull the names up for you, for them, or just go online and you can pull it up.
You may have some squatters back here saying, they're gonna come in and they're gonna say, hey, I've been living back here in my camper for thirty something years.
Alright, so I guess the restriction part is, what, okay now, or, you know, I, I know I got them, but, I mean, you guys asked me to find something, so you already found it, right?
And I, I think so only because.
It's gonna get restrictions after this.
Yeah, well, I, not necessarily that, I think it's because there's so many ambiguities in this plan, and in those things there, and when we started calling those other ones lots and everything else, that we need to, we need to fix it, we need to have a good plan that shows it, a survey plan, right now, we don't have a survey plan, we have tax map and lots.
It's kinda sloppy at the moment.
It's real, real sloppy.
Well, my first quest was just to find out why the restrictions were there, so we found that, basically, we'll go with that, alright. So I'm looking on, I'm moving on, thank you guys for your time, sorry I took so much time, I'm new at all this.
That's what we're here for.
But all good ideas, I appreciate it. Thanks again.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Kimberly Mendel relocation of Shopper Image Lawn from Three High Street, tax map one eighty, one oh seven, to twenty-seven Meadow Street, tax map one seventy-nine, lot one thirty-three.
What was this one?
This one? Where's Robin Allen? Oh, where's Lance Malt?
That's what I wondered.
I was hoping through, uh, saying Kim should go before.
Yeah, Ralph's, Ralph's always last, sorry, Ralph.
That's okay, I'll.
He offered anyways, so I was like, oh, sweet.
Sorry about that, Tony, I didn't see it.
Good, thanks.
So Kim, just tell us a little bit about what you wanna do and what you know so far.
Okay, what, um, we're gonna be hopefully leaving across the street to the old Myers building. Uh, just put a hair salon in there, just wanna relocate from there to the other building, which would be a lot better for our customers, um, 'cause the parking and everything over here has not been very suitable for our handicap customers. Over at the other place, they can just walk right in, there's no hills, nothing, so, just a relocation. Bigger building, better, nicer.
So I know Vic and Russell has looked at this, it does meet our zoning, like, you can have over in that building, you can have a hair salon.
Yeah.
It is on town water and sewer here, it'd be on town water and sewer over there.
It's any greater changes.
So, you know, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, but Russ wanted us, 'cause, you know, as far as a, a site plan goes, that was the biggest reason why she's here, that she need a site plan, and that was what Russ, 'cause it does say in our, in our zoning that you need a site plan, like, if you were to go build a hair salon, you know, on an empty lot over here, you need a site plan. But in this case.
But this is a building.
The building exists, you're not changing anything on the outside of the structure, other than probably sign.
Correct.
Right, but it already has a place for signs, so we just have to go with what's, was there, I guess.
Right. So.
There's no new building.
So, I, I don't think it needs a site plan, and we could talk about the site plan situation to clarify for Russ and Victor
Sure.
um, after, after we meet, but I see no problem with it, but, you know, again, Kim, this is just a conceptual review thing, and, and, but I see no problem with having a site, needing a site plan, and that's all Russ needed from us.
I agree.
Alright.
Good girl. So what does she have to do now?
She's, uh, it's gonna be in the minutes that we don't, we're not requiring a site plan, so Russ is gonna be all set.
So she can just move it?
Well, no, she can't move it.
I just, I, my plumber's gotta come get a permit.
Yeah, she's gotta get permits, she's gotta do all kinds of things way beyond here.
Nope, actually, there is no construction, the only thing we have to do is just put two sinks in, so we just have a plumber, everything else is.
But that would be, that would be like a.
An exit sign.
Yeah, and an exit sign.
That would be a permit required for that work.
That's right, yeah, it's beyond our pay grade, you know, we don't get paid, Russ gets paid, he's, he's inside of him all that stuff.
Yeah, great.
Good, I think that'll be a good move for.
I believe it, it says the planning board could require a site plan, so that was the question, we wanted to just do it proper.
Yep.
This'll be a good move for your handicapped customers, because that hill there, in the wintertime, is not good.
I've had some come and just say, Kim, I couldn't even get out of my car, 'cause where the handicapped is over there, they're on an incline.
Right, right.
And those poor ladies got their walkers, and, ah, it's, but this is much better.
Yeah, okay. I think it'd be a good move.
Alright, great, that's it, thank you, guys.
Alright.
Goodbye. You too.
So Ralph, I assume you're here for Lance?
I am here on Capitol Hill.
Alright, so conceptual review for Lance Bolton, two one oh six Wakefield Road, tax map one seventy-nine, lot fifty-one, expansion of a commercial business.
Yeah, they spent.
Again, Ralph, it's a conceptual review, nothing here will be, uh, is binding.
Same as you guys.
We got that. Yes. This is the, this is the right scale. So in your, that little handout I gave you folks?
I was just saying, the last time you guys came over here, was it?
It's a little bit different, we actually reduced the size of the, uh, the, the addition.
So it's no longer over this line?
Um, this line here is a twenty-foot setback.
Yep.
This is the back line here is Wakefield Road and the pub, so this would be a back line requiring a ten-foot setback, but we were hoping for thirty-six by forty-eight, uh, reassessed what the machine's gonna need, and we reduced it to thirty-two by forty, which is still on that side, or, or landbound side of the, so this is a bigger blow up for you folks, it's any easier to read. Sorry about that, so how are you tonight, Phil?
Just ducking.
Quack, quack. I, I brought the, the larger ones here, Vic, if you wanna put that into the file, um, this is the last, um, adaption of the, of our proposal, um, we're gonna go with the forty by thirty-two. Um, it is a, um, working business that's been there since, that, this barn here that exists has been here since two thousand and five. Lance, just, uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago now, got a new machine, um, this addition is going to house the.
So this is the, sorry.
So this is the new?
The, uh, without the lines, okay, so the, the slash is, uh, the existing.
Yep.
And yes, the, the thirty-two by forty is the proposed.
Now, these are the storage tanks for?
Uh, there's, right now, this one exists, but it's outside this line, so we're gonna move this in, and that'll still take care of the new machine. This is something that if required, he'll put in a second tank to hold for the, for the old machine in the new location. If it's not required by you folks, um, he'll probably do a cost.
Trouble with something like this is that, that's gonna go by manufacturer's spec, right?
What, the, is that a water tank for the machine?
It's for the sediment coming off the machine.
Yeah, this new machine.
So we can't have runoff going on, anyway.
It, it's containment, so, but, I mean, if this is functioning properly, and this new machine reduces a-all kinds of stuff, um, the, 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 um, cuts and stuff like that.
Well, I'm just saying, like, that's, I don't think that's something we decide what is adequate or not, that's up to whatever the equipment is going in, that's code enforcement.
Lance, Lance is willing, you know, to, to do what he's commanded to do, you know, he wants to do this, he's, he'd like to start, uh, construction in mid-April, you know, he'd like to have it all done before the end of the summer, as far as the building itself, but he'd like to get the foundation going. So because it's an expansion, you know, in the village district, it meets all the setbacks, um, and certainly by the master plan, his own ordinance, it's, you know, it's encouraged, you know, this is actually a pretty good example in town of, of, uh, a functioning, flourishing business. There's three full-time employees there, and, and one part-time, uh, girl that does the books, and, um, writes up contracts occasionally. Uh, the parking, uh, the stormwater management, uh, the additional runoff from these two roofs would be, um, minimal, but we're proposing to put a five-hundred gallon holding catch basin here, six-inch corrugated pipe coming along this, under this drip line, and along there, and utilizing the walls that are infiltration trenches, best management practices currently, um, they haven't been compromised at all, uh, I asked Victor to go over there a couple Fridays ago after a, a heavy rain on a Thursday, and there's, you know, the, the rains that we had, um, at that point, the, the stormwater management plan in place is functioning properly, and it's able to, um, accept any additional stormwater runoff from this roof line. I do have a, a message from Jeff Blacharsky down at the DES, I called him up and asked him to review the file. I've got the original files, that's at the state level, if you'd like to look at that map or anything like that, but Jeff said, as long as there's no, this is, um, persistent emergent area right here, if there was any encroachment in that area, or the uplands, wetlands, we would need a revision on the permit that's existing and still current, um, but, there's no need for, for anything, now that's the existing.
It's an existing shed.
That is, yeah.
That you proposed to move.
Yeah, we're gonna roll it back here.
Back here, within the twenty foot, or ten foot?
That's, that's ten foot.
Ten foot?
Um, right now, I just built a little rock retaining wall that some more granite slabs were setting on, I don't know if you need to see an aerial, a real-time aerial of that or not, but we'd set that sixteen.
So the shed's over here already?
No, no, it's, it's still right in the existing thing. So we haven't moved the shed yet, we probably wouldn't do it, right, right now, it holds sinks. This is, whoops, sorry about that.
It's lighter easier now.
This is an aerial view of the property, there's a rock wall, I mean, the boundaries are all there.
Yep.
You folks wanna see anything, but, um.
Yeah, I'm good, thanks.
Was that luck?
I would know if I was looking at it.
Victor?
I've been over there, so, yeah, thank you.
So who owns, uh, Docus Knight's property now?
Um, I'm glad you brought that up, because I found out today, uh, that a Michael O'Connor is the new owner, he bought that back in August, I believe.
Right.
So, um, that little bit of, thank you, Tommy. So my presentation isn't as accurate as it should be.
Then he knows his, there's an encroachment on his land?
No, there isn't.
This sure shows it right here.
Oh, that's Paul Hutchins, okay.
Oh, that's Hutchins, huh?
And, yeah.
We don't see this other lot line.
Well, it kinda goes up and back.
No, I mean, an encroachment, you see this, this, the driveway kinda splits this lot line.
Yeah.
So Lance actually plows Paul out during the wintertime and stuff, they're, they're good neighbors, I would say, until I I'm out there clearing the roof off.
So, so we need a site plan.
Do you need a site plan?
Yeah, we need a site plan.
Okay.
Okay, you, you're putting in a thirty-two by forty building.
It's a twelve-hundred-and-eighty square.
You're expanding an existing building, I would say double in the size, so you need a site plan. Do we need a site plan stamped by an engineer for drainage, or is what Ralph has here good, as long as he puts in there and shows on the plan, a catch basin and the drainage, you know, where, where this roof water's gonna go, and all of those things, or do we need it engineered, and do we need a, a stamp drawing by a surveyor, those are the things we gotta.
Foot, right, Victor was talking about. Very smidgen of, within the two-hundred-and-fifty foot, is in the, um, setback. Um, the environmental scientists have worked on this originally, I left her name and information in the list of the butters, um, thinking, I don't know if you wanna hear Jeff Blacharsky's message to me, I'm not from the DES, but he did state that everything will conform, you know, without any need for an amendment or anything like that, or even an additional permit.
He needs, he knows our zoning, is that what you're saying?
He knows storm water, the, uh, so he, what he's saying is what Cynthia Balsius has already presented to the state is sufficient.
Alright, so, so let's start from again, who is Cynthia Balsick?
Uh, Stony Ridge Environmental over in Alton.
And she did what kind of study?
Uh, she did the study, uh, based on.
She marked the wetlands on this property at one time?
Uh, David Cluff, and.
No, let's stay with her.
That David Cluff is the guy.
No, no, okay, let's stay with her, Ralph.
Okay.
We're talking about her, did she mark the wetlands? No, somebody else did that, what did she do then?
She submitted the application for a, um, let me see what it's called. Exactly what it's called.
Shoreland Protection?
No, Wetlands Permit Application, and this was submitted back in two thousand.
She did a fourteen, that's a minor impact application. Alright, so she did a wetlands application, so all she's done is, she said and did an application, you guys got a DES permit to be able to fill an area?
Yeah, four, four thousand five hundred and eleven square feet.
Alright, so, and you guys, that's all been done thus?
Yeah.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with drainage study for this building?
No.
Okay, how about, and, um, and what did you say this other guy did? He just flagged the wetlands?
David Cluff is the person who came out and actually did a survey, and did delineate all of the, uh, the up, uplands, wetland right here, let me see where, oops, okay, so we're backwards, this is, this is the pub parking lot here, so this is the southern persistent emergent, and then the uplands is out behind your left hand.
Yeah.
That, so outside of the boundaries, that was also delineated, down along the boundary line in that, that's a ravine that's currently taking and sending water into the culvert.
Mm-hmm.
This culvert existed before the permit, and this culvert was permitted. I'm glad I brought this along, 'cause I wouldn't have named all the information.
So what do you guys think about, uh, drainage? Whether we need a stamped, uh, plan from an engineer for the drainage, or do you think we could do it with, you know, Ralph, you, can you just sketch on this plan, or a plan here, one of our plan, the what you plan on doing for the drainage?
There should be.
Yeah, let's draw it right on here.
Okay.
What you said.
It might already be there, that little scribbling right there should say right right there, five-hundred gallon retention tank.
Yeah.
So that's got a hole cut in the top of it, it's about five feet deep, uh, and interior is forty-two inches, but exterior is four feet. So it's got a, uh, it'll have a six-inch corrugated plastic pipe under these eaves, sending into it and taking water off, off this roof, well, actually, this is a shed roof, so that all of the water along here's gonna. Water off off this roof, well, actually, this is a shed roof, so that all of the water along here is gonna end up here. That's gonna catch and send stuff through another six inch perforated pipe. And around here, and well dumped to daylight out behind this infiltration trench. That infiltration trenches.
But but is, this, you're, this, what you have proposed here is a a dry well.
No, well.
So it's not infiltration at all, it just, it's like a catch basin, it's gonna get water and you're gonna have a six inch pipe going out of it.
It's got two holes cut in it.
Point loading over to here?
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, uh.
It's not gonna be perforated or?
It is perforated, this, there's gonna be a foundation drainage, instead of a regular standard four inch foundation drain, we're using six. For the overload, everything that's gonna be backfilled up against this foundation, which will probably be I C Fs. Everything that's backfilled up against it will be all stone, inch and a half probably, most likely, wrapped in cloth so that the sediment stays out of it. You don't mind if I sit next to you there?
Doesn't have any choice.
So.
So the.
So the water's coming off this direction over here.
Yeah.
For this front.
Yeah.
Water's coming off the back here.
Right.
What's this catch basin got to do with anything?
Any overload, well, actually, when you, when you put it that way, really nothing, other than. Um, what's coming off this roof line, because this is a shed roof, it's gonna dump everything.
If any, I don't know if you guys, I mean.
I understand what you're saying.
If if we did a, if we did a sidewalk of this place, I'm pretty sure this is all gravel now, it's all. Parking basically, or trucks driving into this building and everything.
There's a concrete apron in front of this.
There's a concrete apron even here, so it's already mostly, I would consider non-pervious right now. But I would think that at a minimum, we'd want something to catch the water here and there off the roof.
Beyond what would be in in the um, French drain kind of scheme, you know, there's a perimeter drain.
Well, we just don't wanna see it coming, loading down into the, down here, which is just gonna go straight into the lake.
So the plan is to oversize the footing drains and oversize the irrigation trenches. Or the infiltration trenches that are around the perimeter of the foundation, so everything coming, there's not an idea of gutters. Or, you know, rain barrels or anything like that, it's oversizing the uh, foundation drains themselves.
Alright, but the new entry to this building gonna be here?
No.
Same here?
Same time, yeah.
So there'll be no entry into the building here?
That's correct.
So the rain can fall off the roof and go into the stone?
Just like it, uh, well, go into the driveway.
We want that roof water into s- into the ground.
Okay.
Into stone, whether you put a, whether you put a uh, gutter up here and you put it into. A pipe system, you know, here to go out this way or whatever, it's gotta.
Yeah.
We don't wanna splash it onto this gravel, it's already here, existing here.
Okay, and so the intention was to mimic exactly what's going on now, you know, just a, just a thirty-two foot extension of the current conditions.
Mm-hmm, it's a current building. Yeah.
So there's, you know, I mean, the, as far as diverting and stuff like that, the only thing that I could see as a potential problem. Was in this back corner here, so, you know, an excess of water coming off, I thought could be trapped. Because of the perpendicular angle of the of the foundation.
These are going down, this is two foot lower than this, so this grade is going down, that was, no reason why you can't get the water out around here. But what we're worried about is this water off the roof from the new building, the water off the roof here and the water off the roof here.
Okay.
Going into some kind of system. So it don't point load into this wetland.
Yeah, well, it'd be pretty difficult because, I mean, it'd be pretty difficult to do that only because of the grading right now, along the. Along this side of the building, it's all pitched towards this, there's a rock wall there that slows down all of the flow with cloth and stuff like that. So that little rock wall, not little, it's it's.
I I think what you're saying, looking at the map here though, it's not showing that change, it's showing a steady descent down, which is gonna.
I understand.
What what I'm trying to get at is, I'm trying to help you try to engineer something, so you don't need to get an engineer to do it. We need something better, if we're gonna decide you're gonna come in with something or not.
I mean, if you put retention swales over here, just that would take care of one side, this side you could pipe it over.
Yeah, any, anything that would overflow beyond the foundation drains that are planned or or. Utilized, I should say, I can't see an overflow, I can tell you right now that under. This area bef- in the existing area, behind the shed, we currently have a ten inch perforated pipe. That's wrapped in cloth and and inch and a half stone, that catches any amount of water that's coming along this slope now.
Yeah.
It's runs the uphill of this well, the well tile, and it dumps in this area here about. Five feet, maybe even six feet behind this retaining wall, this is a four foot tall retaining wall, so it's six feet deep. And that properly functions as a, as a infiltration trench, best management practice. So that's what's currently there, we only intended to enhance what's currently there, I don't know if that makes any sense to you, but.
So this, this here is four foot lower than up here, right?
Um, in that, yes, in the.
And and you're talking about getting these two roof ditches and the drain for the foundation, cause this is gonna be slab on grade, right?
Uh, drive in to you, another apron.
Right, so it's gonna be slab on grade, you're gonna have a four foot frost wall, basically.
Gonna go five, just in order to catch.
Whatever, but this drainage thing that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
To catch the water, doesn't, only has to be, you know, a foot in the ground, because you don't need to be a, have a foundation drain down five feet.
We're gonna, we were gonna oversize everything, so I.
I'm talking about oversizing, I'm talking about height.
Yeah.
So then you could get, if you're up a little higher here, you're up at, you know, say a foot below your slab of your floor. With what you're talking about, pipes and water, so this water can get, whether it be a gutter into this. Drainage system along the side of this foundation, and this same one here, they hook into here, and they go into some kind of. I know you understand, you put stone behind your walls, that can infiltrate out into this.
In cloth.
In cloth, but I would still think that we we would wanna see something here as far as a.
Retention area.
A retention area, you know, in this back corner before it goes off of this property into there.
It it is, it is hard to see or you or even understand.
But we're gonna need that kinda drawing, Ralph, we're gonna need some kinda drawing, it's whether a. Registered engineer has to do it, or you're gonna give it to us, but we gotta have something.
Okay.
Showing drainage, how the drainage is, cause.
Off the new building.
Yeah, cause our regulations show that we can't put more water off of this site anywhere. So we need to understand, if we're gonna let you do it, without a, an engineer telling us that he's gonna do it. We need to uh, so we need to be comfortable with it.
So I mean, I can only draw what's already there, you know, what I, my representation here is your cap. So what would be a two foot cap is on top of a five to six foot. In effect, dry well. So I can, I can expose that, I can take pictures and show you what's existing, what's currently working without any.
You gotta draw it on a plan.
Okay.
You gotta draw it on a plan for us.
These plans here that I'm, that I'm presenting to you, I'll, I'll draw it on on that.
It it has, we have to have some kinda drainage.
Okay.
That.
I understand.
That will probably, you know, uh, get bonded.
Yeah.
Something here will get bonded to make sure that the drainage got put in the the building. I mean, we've, we've gone through this, you know, since I've been around, like up at, up at uh, Woodman Stove, it's nothing new, nothing we're trying to pick on you or Lance.
I'm not saying.
Up there, they're supposed to put in some catch basins for some parking lots when they put in their buildings, and they never did. And then they come back and try to do something else again, and guess what, they never put in the catch basins, never did anything.
It's not my business, but I.
I'm just using that as an example, here, now, what we do is we bond those type things. Whether it be landscaping or drainage.
Okay.
Down on the, at the industrial park, we made them put infiltrations around that building. It was all beautiful sand down there, there wasn't a wetland ten fifteen feet away like this one is.
Right.
Alright, and he had to bond that, and Victor had to get on there, or the last code enforcement officer had to get on there, and bulge it was all put in. And then we give him his bond money back.
Okay. So you just need to see a plan.
Well.
I understand.
Nothing here is binding.
I understand.
But you're gonna need to bring us a plan that shows us some kinda drainage.
Yeah, and that can be done.
Alright, and we understand that Lance is running a business there, and we like that, we're glad he's expanding in town. And we're not asking necessarily for a drainage study and a stamped plan.
Right.
But we could ask for that at our meeting.
Right, yeah, okay.
Is there um?
Well, let me know if you think that that will probably happen, because I I would.
We don't, we don't know if that'll happen, but if this, this abutter comes here and said, hey, water's pouring onto my lot right now.
It's up there.
You know, then we got no choice much.
That would, that would defy the the law of gravity, but but that's okay.
Other things too, when you're getting so close, like this drainage, this culvert plant, is there another access for water to get in there?
Uh, no, it's all coming, this is what.
It's all buried?
Yeah, this is all what the state wanted us to do.
Yeah, you don't wanna go into that.
I I'm not gonna get, no, I'm just, we're getting close to.
Not, not, nothing else.
Didn't know how deep it was.
No, the only other opening is right here over by the fountain. So this right now is below finished grade by at least fifty inches, fifty-two inches to the top of that eighteen inch culvert.
What are the setbacks on this, um, for buildings, is it ten feet?
Ten feet on the back line in the village.
Is this depicting twenty feet right here, these two?
Well, see, that's one, one of the things I wanted to make sure, these big maps are a scale of one to twenty feet.
Okay.
Um, the the blowdown is, you know.
So how far, how far is this corner right here from the lot line?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet, okay, alright, cause you would ask about like, you know, surveying, and if, if it was, if this was ten feet. I would say maybe we would need that survey, but since it's double that, I I, to me, you don't think it's necessarily.
Well, the shed's gonna get moved.
The the shed is going to be right on that ten foot out back on the proposed one. Um, it doesn't need to be, but I did create a little, uh, Lance at one point wanted to do a little hot tub back there, so I made a nice big base for it. But now with this proposed addition, he sees that nice base for it, more of a spot to put the shed.
Um, Victor, what would, somebody comes in and says, I wanna put a shed right on my lot line. I'm sorry, not I wanna, I wanna put it right at the ten feet, what do you require from them to do that?
I don't think there's any restrictions.
Do you?
Well, we have, what we require for something like that is they do a shed after David, so they mark it and they, so it puts.
The home on them, yeah, on them.
Yeah, i- if it was something like a primary structure, we could require a sort of plot plan, you know. I think I understand what you're saying, Tom, um, to show on a plan, I I was trying to keep these as clean as I could, but, you know.
You can have a clean one, start on another one, mark up.
Yeah, I'm gonna take two of these with me and leave, leave.
We don't want any, this is conceptual, nothing here is binding, you can take your plan, nothing here is binding, but.
Alright. But I, I just know that.
Two new people here. Could be.
That's true, it only depends, there's a write-in candidate, right? It's got nothing to do with the elections really, it's got everything to do with with uh, Lance wanting to build, you know, go forward and and expand.
No, I thi- I think everybody here wants to see the.
Yeah.
Go forward in the, just in the right direction.
I believe that.
And we've, we have, you know. I know you guys have done, this is good that you've done that work down there, that helps, that this wasn't done illegally or anything like that. Those things help.
Right.
Uh, but still gotta have some kinda drainage, and I think we've done the same thing for maybe Tumble Down and some other businesses in town. That we haven't, we've waived that, you know, drainage study slash engineering review, cause it costs a lot of money. And we understand that it's already existing building, we want it to prosper, and you know, it's not like we'd be setting a precedent, but we wanna make sure it's taken care of.
Right, um, so beyond a drawing, you know, a a um, sketch, do you need photographs of what's existing now? I mean, do you need anything to be exposed or revealed?
We're looking to take any water off of this roof and put it into some kinda retention area slash stone. And you can, you know, you should write on the plan that also, you know, the overflow for that is going into this stone. Uh, backing of this wall, so it's not point loaded anywhere into that wetland.
You might wanna, instead of just showing it from a top view to a.
Little cross section.
Cross section, show the depth.
Yeah. Alright.
Does he plan on huck hop in this or anything?
Uh, he was shell shocked with the last bit of pervious paving. Which he, you know, I mean, he, he, the slopes don't see the water sitting there and burping down through, but the flats do. And um, that was just pretty costly, so he does not intend to pave the existing or the the remaining parking lot that's not.
He gonna put another slab out?
Uh, no, uh, more tripods if necessary, but.
No, like he has a slab out of this building now, is he gonna put a slab out here?
No, not on the, not on the driving or the parking area, there may be another concrete apron. If there is another concrete apron in front of the addition, it would be, yeah, it would be.
No, that's what I'm asking.
It would be on a gable end, so eaves.
But I would consider, like I said, this whole area, you know, is all impervious now, it's packed solid gravel. Drive on any time of year.
Yes, and it's stabilized, you know, which is the whole reason for the the initial.
It's stabilized, it doesn't let the water down through it, it's not like this nice duff layer all the way through here, you know.
It's not, it's not, once, once it's got gravel, it becomes impervious, so it could be like.
But where it runs into is that that infiltration trench, a retention wall, a retaining wall.
I don't think we have a problem here with how many feet of uh, coverage area on the lot. But that coverage area does include the impervious areas. Something that you probably should check too, Ralph, you should have that on the plan.
Yeah, I think it's uh, currently it's sixty-two percent, I think. Current, without any additions, um, sixty-two, but well.
That might already be over on.
I think it's, I think it's eighty-five.
I I I don't know exactly what it is.
I think it's eighty-five.
It, I don't know exactly what it is, but it'd be nice, it, you know, that could be a question.
Yeah, so at the point of uh, pre-permitting on the retaining wall on the parking area. Uh, that impervious area was forty-nine percent, after that was done, it was sixty-two percent.
And I don't think this is gonna change that much, because it's already traveled, but.
Okay. Lance's words, whatever it takes. Except, no Ben Franklin's.
We weren't thinking that, we were thinking we wanna uh, you know.
No, I think, you know.
What we'd like, what you, what we'd like, right?
Yeah.
Tell Lance, this would like this water when it comes out of this culvert and it goes into some kinda another thing that goes in from a culvert here over to the lake.
It doesn't.
It's gotta go somewhere.
It goes, it goes to.
It goes to his long metal or go that way?
It goes into the funeral home, actually.
Okay, so it goes into some catch basins over there?
Out behind Colby's.
Okay, so so that outlet, over there, we would like some kinda best management practices on the end of that outlet. Okay, you can figure out something for over there, that's what we'd like it.
Well, we got it all on the property pertaining to book the applications for.
Just let Lance know, if he want, think it's whatever it takes, we would be more than appreciative, and he could work with A W R on it. To make sure that that water gets a little bit treated before it goes into the Branch River.
If he needs to install a new wastewater management system. Thank you, thank you very much. Just the proposed addition, not the existing building, right, we're talking about the stormwater management for the addition.
Yes, the proposed addition.
I understand that. I'm gonna knock up all my pretty little maps. Let me roll that up for you?
Oh, you gotta roll it, unfold it?
I think you're trying to aggravate somebody.
Here.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate you. Appreciate your time, folks. Now you got me confused with the way it goes.
Now we have board business.
Thanks.
Postage increases for applications, you're welcome. Postage increase, increases for applications.
Okay, so the postage went up. So we just like permission to change our forms, so we had a postage increase for, uh, regular mail fifty cent went up to fifty cents, certified has gone up to three dollars and fifty cents.
From?
Return receipt.
From, from a dollar fifty, it's gone to three fifty?
No, that's.
Have good night, folks, we'll see you in a minute.
And, uh, return receipt's gone up to two, so we just, we were asking to change the abutters fees from six doll, uh, to six dollars and eighty cents. Currently, I believe it's six dollars and seventy cents, so it's an increase of ten cents.
So is that in the, is that in the zoning requirements?
These are, this is, well, I'm sorry, what is?
The, the actual cost, I mean.
These are, yeah, on all the application, all the application forms for.
But are the applications part of the regulations? 'Cause if they're not, I don't understand.
Well, the applications are for the planning board, so, I mean, if we don't need it, we don't need it. We just didn't wanna go ahead and raise the fees without your permission.
Yes, okay.
Well, Dick's question is, is it in the zoning, this, this application fee schedule in the zoning? I think it's in our zoning book, but I don't think it's a.
Oh, I see what you.
Right, it's nothing that town has voted on, so it's something that we can change.
And it's not in the site plan and subdivision regulations themselves, it's a form, so.
Yeah, well, I, it is on all the application forms.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
Do you, okay.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so like all our forms are right up here, and we wanna change these fees to correct.
So it's only one up ten cents?
Per a butter.
Per a butter.
I just wonder why we don't have something somewhere that says whatever the US Post Office fee is, that's what.
Why don't we have bunkhouses in our zone?
We may, we may have something in there.
But I mean, if it's just, do we need a motion to do that? 'Cause if we do, I'll make a motion that we, that we, uh, that we change the, uh, the postage schedule, fee schedule for abutters uh, in line with the new postal rates.
Section.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I don't hear any unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have site plan review authorization. So Russ and I talked about this a little bit. Like Nate used to make a little decision on whether you needed a site plan review, like on a Kim Mendel situation. Okay, you know, it meets the zoning, you can go here, you know, does it need a site plan, I don't think it needs a site plan, but we should check with the planning board so he could, you know, call us up and ask, and I think, you know, like Nate and, uh, our past chairman, um.
Doug.
Doug used to talk all the time and go over whether it needed to come before us or not. I think that between Victor and, and Russ, you know, they know, but, and I think they're very cautious, if there is any gray area, they would call. And they would say, and I, I think like Russ did on this one, you know, he said, you know, set it in there, I just didn't know the flavor of the board, how you guys really feel, so I didn't wanna not have her come before us, and she wanted to get going right away, so he wanted to get that done, so we had her come in. And we, he said that, okay, if we get this put on the agenda, so I mean, I think Russ has the authorization automatically to enforce our zoning. And if he has a gray area, he should talk to us about it. That's all, but, you know, other than that, he has the authorization to do it.
Actually, in our zoning regs on page nine, uh, the ledge in table one, permitted you subject to site plan review if required.
Sure.
And that's on every business, every business, all businesses.
So we had, we had talked about, I think, I think we had talked about at one point, that yes, um, you know, the, the code enforcement does have leeway, right, depending upon how s, how big or small a change or like whatever an application might be. Does it make sense that maybe once a month we would get a report of what might have come through the office to say this is what, you know, somebody came in for this permit.
This was approved.
This was approved, and that way, like, we could take a look at it, and if, if we thought something was maybe a little, I don't know, like over the gray area, we could discuss it. And, and the other reason would be, we as board members would be aware of something going in when somebody from the public comes to us and says, hello, how come, you know, there's a new, I don't know, pizza place going in somewhere, and we say, well, I have no idea about that, what happened? I, I don't know, I, I don't wanna make a lot of work either, like I'm not asking for anything that would be this big formal report, right, but just maybe these are the three things that came through our, our office and, and they're moving forward.
Or maybe an email at the time they come through, then we could.
I mean, it wouldn't even have, I could even do it as they come in, rather than.
Sure, sure.
That's not saying, do it as they come in, so it's not coming in.
I'm gonna look to you, Tom, to whether that's.
I, I think is, is if, if he sends out an email to us all.
Sure.
You know, hey, Russ and I did this, just so you guys know, but I think if there's any building or addition, you know, Russ is not gonna, you know, go forward with anything like that without.
And, and I, I just wanna, from my standpoint, I'm not looking at that as, oh, I'm trying to wa, watch over what you guys are doing, not at all, I just think it would be, could be helpful that we're aware of what might be, you know, new in town or coming when people ask.
Absolutely, I totally agree with that, I, I mean, I think everything should be run through the board anyway, so, I mean, that communication of.
Yeah, right, so this.
That we look, this looks good to us, but just wanted, or I could even bring it to them.
And I'm not even, I'm not even suggesting that on those you have to even ask the board, that it's just, hey, this is what we did.
But if there's a, if there's any, any question whatsoever, we absolutely would, at least I would.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Russ would too.
Yes, no, I, I meant that as a department.
Yeah, sure, Russ is very concerned about our zone, and if he feels as though it's good, I think he should be able to say that.
Yeah.
And, but if, you know, if he does that, and there's a new business coming in, I think like Doug, it's a courtesy for us to know that there's a new business going in here where there was one previously, and it, you know, it meets the zoning and meets the criteria, but we know about a new business.
Yeah.
And of course, the same old thing, if there's a building no change, or an addition, or things like that, you know, that really should go, come to the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, approval of previous meeting minutes of January twenty-fourth.
I just have a, a thing about, on the adjournment. Johnny Blackwood should have abstained, because he wasn't at that other meeting.
When he okayed the previous minutes, you mean?
Yep.
He did, three zero one.
He's got it there?
Yeah, three zero one.
Okay.
He didn't abstain, but I knew he wasn't there, so I abstained him.
I was gonna say, you must have done it, because when I watched, when I watched it, I said, he didn't say he abstained.
I abstained him, 'cause I knew he wasn't there.
Good for you, Priscilla.
I don't think that's a word, but.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of January twenty-fourth. I was over here, so.
Benita.
Um, I'm just trying to go through this, uh, last one here, see where it says we made a motion to table which one, six? Article thirty-three. It says that we're voting.
Definition?
No.
Twenty-three D.
Oh, twenty-three D, yeah.
And then it was added to the definitions at the end, it says, Mr. Silcox made a motion, seconded by Mrs. Stewart, to table amendment number six.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. We'll get buried in there, there.
So, Priscilla, I think what we'd like is, is the, um, when you do do the minutes, you know how like you have approval of minutes of January third, two thousand nineteen highlighted, or bold, in bold?
You want it in bold?
Yeah, any motions should be in bold, that's our previous minutes, so like that. So any motions that we make, put in bold.
I'll do.
I'll note that, it's in a very well done.
I'll make sure the motions are right at the bottom of the paragraph, so that you can look at the bottom of the paragraph and see that this is a motion. I will make them bold up. I mute, would you see it?
I said it very well done.
Very well done. It was a difficult meeting.
Do I hear a second, we have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
I think you did a second, didn't you?
No, I wasn't here.
I'll give a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
And two abstentions.
Three zero two.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So do you wanna take this correspondence up, and seeing how you must like chew up all our correspondence, or maybe we never get any letters from the public? And Donna, I apologize for not acknowledging you earlier as a alternate member.
Set time, then.
Yeah. I'm calling you out.
Sorry, sorry, Donna, very sorry. I was more thinking about the whole board, and I did look to that front row, so I do apologize.
I thought maybe since I knew I wasn't gonna sit up at the, at the board.
Yeah, but no, I, honestly.
I'll make sure it's in the minutes, Donna.
So again, though, if I do apologize, please make sure that's in the minutes, too, Priscilla.
I know you didn't expect to be me, I do.
That's for sure. Um, no further public comment out there, it doesn't look like. Our next meeting will be February twenty-first, and I'll stand a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, no. Awesome.